Good morning, everyone. Morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come that a quorum of this council is present. This council session is now come to order. I'm asking for all members to please take your seats. All visitors, please retire to the seats outside the rails. And before proceeding, I would like to ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent and/or vibrate. I will also ask for all sidebar conversations to be taken outside of the council chambers. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Reverend Carolyn Coverness, Senior Pastor of Mother Bethel AME Church. She is here today as my guest. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Good morning. Let us pray. God of all creation, God of our weary years and silent tears, God of Richard, God of Flora, God of Sarah, God of Hercules, God of Mole, God of Christopher, God of Richmond, God of Giles, God of Austin, God of Paris, God of Joe, God of Hercules, God of Ona Judge, God of us all. We gather as public servants to seek your guidance, wisdom, and grace as we carry out this work entrusted to us. We acknowledge the sacrifice and struggles of all those who came before us, those whose names we know and those whose names are lost to history, but whose lives and labors laid the foundation for the freedoms and opportunities we now enjoy. God of justice, remind us that our duty is to serve all people with integrity and compassion. As we deliberate and make decisions, may we be mindful of the least among us, those who struggle, those who are unseen, and those who have been silenced. Let our actions reflect your love and righteousness, and may we always strive to do what is just and fair in your sight. God of mercy, bless this council and this great city of Philadelphia. Grant us the courage to face challenges with strength, humility to listen with open hearts, and the perseverance to work together for the common good. Help us to be instruments of peace and unity in a world that is so often feels divided. God of hope, inspire us with the knowledge that each of us has the power to make a difference. May we leave this place emboldened to serve with purpose, rooted in the faith that your light will guide us through every trial and triumph. We pray this in your holy name, asking your blessing upon this assembly and upon this great city we are called to serve, and we say together, "Amen."
Amen. The chair thanks the Reverend for the invocation. Council will be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 11th, 2025. The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 11th, 2025 be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 11th, 2025 stand approved. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the Majority Leader. The chair recognizes Minority Leader Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there's one request for leave of absence today. On behalf of the minority whip, Nicholas O'Rourke.
The chair thanks the Minority Leader. Leave will be granted. The chair now recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar, certainly prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matter stated by Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend the legislative affairs of our great city, and we certainly invite you to come again. Also want to take a moment to acknowledge in our presence today, we have Associate District Attorney New Class of Assistant District Attorneys joining us. There's a lot of y'all too. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much for joining us, and we wish you success on your new positions with the District Attorney's Office. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I'm honored to recognize Rose Semel for her dedicated service as an intern in my office this summer. Rose is a rising senior at the academy at Palumbo. She has distinguished herself academically with honors like Student of the Quarter and an award in AP US Government and Politics. Rose founded her school's PA Youth Vote Chapter, leads in Turn Up Youth Vote, and serves in multiple leadership roles, including Junior Class Secretary and Debate Captain. Rose represents the best our city's future, smart, driven, and deeply committed to public service. We thank her and proudly celebrate her today. Rose, can you please stand?
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gortier.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to acknowledge my special guest for today, Pete Wilson, leader of the Sixth Ward in West Philadelphia. He is also the leader of a group called Philadelphia Community Outreach Committee. They have been working throughout West Philadelphia to help residents reclaim their blocks from drug activity and shootings. We've been working very successfully together, and I'm grateful for his efforts.
Welcome to City Council. Chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you very much, Council President. Today, I'd like to welcome a special guest to Philadelphia City Council. He is a resident of the great Fourth Council District, represented by my colleague and District Councilmember, Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. He is also a recent graduate of Temple University, so he is Temple made. He is here to watch government in action and also represents the very best of the Fourth Council District. Please join me in welcoming Amin Flowers to Philadelphia City Council.
Congratulations and welcome to City Council. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilman Kessie Lozada, who will present a resolution recognizing and honoring the distinguished Latino leaders and community advocates in the city of Philadelphia during Hispanic Heritage Month, with Luis Hencapie and Amy Espizio. Please join the council member at the podium. And everyone else who is being honored, you can also please come on up as well and join the council member at the podium. Joining Councilman Kessie Lozada is Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma, Councilmember Mike Drissul, Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young, Councilmember Rue Landau, Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips, Councilmember Jim Harity, Councilmember Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Minority Leader Kendra Brooks, Councilmember Jamie Gortier, Councilmember Brian O'Neill, Councilmember Mark Squilla. Is it safe to say this is everybody? Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. You may begin, Councilmember Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. Muy buenos dias. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. For me, it is an honor to have all of these individuals stand with me as we recognize Latinos who have contributed to the growth and the impacts that they make every day in the city of Philadelphia. It is important to honor individuals like this during Hispanic Heritage Month, not just as a celebration, but as a powerful affirmation of their impact. These leaders reflect the strengths, resilience, and brilliance of our community. By recognizing their work in education, health, the arts, and civic life, we uplift the values of equity, representation, and service that make my district and our city stronger and more inclusive and more united. So, we recognize and honor distinguished Latino leaders and community advocates in the city of Philadelphia during Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated annually from September 15th to October 15th. To recognize and honor the histories, culture, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors come from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas Philadelphia's Latino community have long enriched the social, cultural, and economic fabric of our city, distinguishing themselves as business owners, educators, civic leaders, artists, and essential workers who build stronger neighborhoods and inspire future generations. And whereas, while the art achievements and enduring legacy of Hispanics and Latino communities should be honored throughout the year, Hispanic Heritage Month offers a dedicated moment to celebrate the resilience, vibrancy, and immeasurable impact on the life of our city and the nation. And...
Whereas, in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month 2025, the Council of the City of Philadelphia is proud to recognize local advocates, educators, artists, and leaders whose work in faith and wellness, youth empowerment, education, and cultural preservation continues to uplift and empower Philadelphia's Latinos community. And...
Whereas, Luis Hencapie exemplifies dedication to health equity, community-based physical therapy, education, and mentorship, uplifting Philadelphia's diverse populations. His service on local state boards and his work as founder of Fortaleza Physical Therapy reflects his unwavering commitment to building a healthier, more equitable city for all. And...
Whereas, Sister Anna Iris Garnia has devoted her life to bilingual education, technological literacy, and service to Latino communities, fostering inclusion and opportunity. Through her work at the IHM Center for Literacy, Sister Anna has empowered hundreds of adult learners with digital tools and language skills that open doors to opportunity. And...
Whereas, Mari Darlin Mari Gonzalez uses data-driven research and civic leadership to advance equitable urban development and community empowerment, a woman after my own heart. Her service on local boards, leadership in the Urban Land Institute, as well as her presidency of LULAC Philadelphia demonstrate her deep commitment to inclusive community planning and youth engagement. And...
Whereas, Nilda Alpimental Perez's leadership in affordable housing, food security, and neighborhood advocacy has strengthened Philadelphia's civic fabric. Her decades-long career in public service, strategic communications, and grassroots organizing continue to amplify the voices of underserved communities across the city. And...
Whereas, Erica Goslin through her social work and leadership at Tor Puerto Rico... Puerto Rico. Yep, Puerto Rico. I was getting translated back and about. Champions Puerto Rican Arts and Culture Heritage as Tools for Healing and Justice. Under her leadership, Tor Puerto Rico has expanded its reach, offering transformative youth programming and community-centered arts education that fosters identity, belonging, and pride. And...
Whereas, Rafael Alvarez Fibo advances neighborhood revitalization, environmental stewardship, and LGBTQ+ equity through advocacy and community development at Esperanza. His lifelong commitment to grassroots organizing, cultural empowerment, and equitable public investment reflects his vision for a just, thriving Philadelphia. And...
Whereas, Dr. Yanera Rodriguez's leadership as an educator and principal exemplifies culturally responsible teaching, literacy, and family engagement in Philadelphia schools. Her visionary leadership at William Cramp Elementary, including the creation of the Anna V. Cruz Community Center, has transformed her alma mater into a hub of support and inclusion for students and families alike. And...
Whereas, Maribel Lozada Aziaaga has committed decades to youth empowerment and cultural preservation through folkloric arts and community programs. As Executive Director of Centro Nueva Creación, Maribel continues to nurture resilience, cultural pride, and academic enrichment in next generation of Philadelphia leaders. And...
Whereas, Amy Ubo's work as an immigrant advocate and strategist advances equity, inclusion, and trauma-informed care in public service and nonprofit sectors. Her leadership in launching the Philadelphia PHL CID program and expanding immigrant inclusion citywide has created living infrastructure to support and uplift Philadelphia's immigrant communities. And...
Whereas, these nine distinguished individuals have made profound and lasting contributions in the city of Philadelphia and its communities, embodying the spirit of Hispanic Heritage Month. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, hereby recognizes and honors distinguished Latino leaders and community advocates in the city of Philadelphia during Hispanic Heritage Month, affirms our collective commitment to equity, cultural pride, civic engagement, and inspires all Philadelphians to uplift the voices, histories, and contributions of Latino communities in every corner of our city.
Amy and Luis, the floor is yours. Amy?
Just getting there, just getting there. I promise. I promise, I got you.
Good morning, everyone. And thank you so much, Councilmember Lozada and this council body for recognizing me and these other nine individuals as part of Hispanic Heritage Month. Today's beautiful celebration of the power of Latino community and coming together. And Councilmember Lozada, as the Latina on council, I'm grateful to know that I know that I can count on you for always lifting up our community's stories and experiences. So, thank you. I wanted to take a brief moment to share some personal reflections about Hispanic Heritage Month and what it means to me, especially at this moment in time in human history. This celebration is not just about celebrating us specific individuals up here together, but it's really about uplifting whole communities, about community power. It's about staying presente. We are here, and we deserve to be equal players in all aspects of civic, economic, and cultural life. This month also invites non-Latinos to stand in solidarity with us, to listen and truly value the voices of Latinos and groups in our city, your neighbors, your coworkers, your children's classmates, and teammates, folks in your faith communities. This is a time for us to stand together. I know historically, Philadelphia has been a very black-and-white political city, but I wanted to share some additional perspectives and invite folks to lean into the growing diversity of Philadelphia. According to the 2025 Pew State of the City Report, the racial and ethnic mix of our city has been slowly changing over the last 30 years. The report points out that our city is now 33% white, 38% black, 16% Latino, 8% Asian, and 5% Other. What this means is that there is a growing collective Other beyond black-and-white residents in this city, representing nearly one-third of this city's population together. And those voices must be listened to, and those experiences must be included in all policymaking decisions. I encourage each of you here today to learn about the diversity of your districts. Consider if you are doing your best to engage all the residents in your neighborhoods, especially at this time, a time when our country's Supreme Court has authorized racial profiling, a time when our city needs to have preparedness plan in case National Guard comes forcibly into our space. Our communities are terrified. Meanwhile, federal agents have already been steadily disappearing more Philadelphians of all racial immigrant communities, day after day, utilizing aggressive and illegal techniques that violates the constitutional laws of this country. We should all be clear that an attack on any Philly resident, regardless of where they were born, is an attack on all of us. None of us are safe. It is a matter of time before they come for people in your neighborhood, immigrants and citizens alike. We've seen this in our country's history before with McCarthyism and coin hell pro. I urge you to continue to stand firmly in our welcoming values, recognize the contributions of Latino and other communities, Asian, African, Caribbean, Arab. We are part of the future of the city alongside our black-and-white brothers and sisters. I urge you to include us in every day and not just during our month or weeks of celebration, as the council members shared. Inclusion and belonging is really on all of us. It's about choosing to show up and stand with each other, especially when it's hard. Thank you for allowing us to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, and thank you for allowing me to share some remarks.
Luis, floor is yours.
Good afternoon. First and foremost, I'd like to thank City Council, especially Councilwoman Lozada and her team, for this honor. And in this building, in this city where democracy started, it reminds me, watching her team and how tirelessly they work in our communities, why I do what I do. You know, we have voices. Our community does not have voices. We live in an environment today that it's very easy to just throw in the towel and give up. But if we give up, there's a whole community behind us that will be failing because they have no voices. And it is an honor for me to receive this because it fortifies why I do what I do in our community. And I think that we have forgotten to lead with humanity, not potty lines. And I think that we need to reflect and go back in time and just use our humanity to be leaders that we are. Our community puts us in certain places to be leaders. Let's lead with humanity. Thank you.
Council will be at ease. Just another housekeeping item. If you're here visiting City Council, we ask if you put your phone on silent and/or vibrate. Thank you. The next order of communication, the next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arm deliver the messages from the Mayor to the Chief Clerk. Will the Chief Clerk read the messages from the Mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a draft of a resolution approving the 2025 through 2026 Housing Opportunities Made Easy Home Program.
Excuse me, Liz. Councilor Beatty. John, could you shut the door? Please resume.
A resolution approving the 2025 through 2026 Housing Opportunities Made Easy Home Program Annual Program Statement and Budget, which addresses expenditures by various agencies in the first year of the home program. And an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Officers and Employees by changing the compensation of members of the zoning board of adjustment, all under certain terms and conditions. And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 4152 Viola Street, 4154, 4200, 4202, 4204, 4220, 4227, Viola Street, 4153, 4157, 4205, Leedy Avenue, 1703, 1711, North 42nd Street, 1129, 1135, 1201, 1205, and 1207, North 41st Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2806, 2903, 2907, 2913, 2917, 2919, 2925, 2937, and 2939 Cecil Beemore Avenue located in the 5th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 1811 North Bucknell Street, 1818 North 23rd Street, 1805 North Ringgold Street, 1850 North Ringgold Street, 1937 North 19th Street, 1939, 1945, 1935, 1947, 1907, 1913, and 1931 North 19th Street, 1909 North Van Pelt Street in the 5th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code. And to the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on September 16th, 2025, I signed the following bill, which was passed by council at its session on September 11th, 2025, Bill Number 250530-A. Council President, there are no further communications in my possession.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips. He has no bills and resolutions for today. The Chair recognizes.
Sorry, Council President. Sorry, Council President, I was talking to the Assistant District Attorneys for a moment, they just came in. Good morning, everyone. There are no bills and resolutions for introduction today. Good morning.
Thank you very much, Dr. Phillips. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore-Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Today I offer one bill on your behalf and two resolutions, one privileged and one non-privileged on your behalf.
Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance repealing in its entirety Bill Number 240415, approved July 19th, 2024, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bounded by Island Avenue, the Delaware Expressway, and Bartram Avenue."
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the 2100 block of McClellan Street Christine E. Thomas Way in honor of Christine E. Thomas for her extraordinary service to her community and the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution condemning President Donald Trump's recent efforts to whitewash, suppress, and rewrite American history by removing slavery-related content from national parks, including an exhibit at Independence National Historic Park honoring the nine individuals enslaved by President George Washington, developed by the Avenging the Ancestors Coalition, thereby attempting to erase Black history from the national narrative.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gortier.
Good morning, Council President. Today I have one bill and one non-privileged resolution, one bill on your behalf, and a privileged resolution on behalf of Majority Whip Thomas.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Contracts and Procurement to Prohibit Contractors Providing Solid Waste, Recycling, or Composting Services to the City from Incinerating Discarded Matter Under Certain Terms and Conditions."
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Officers and Employees by Changing the Compensation of Members of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions."
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 4152, 4154, 4200, 4202, 4204, 4220, 4227, Viola Street, 4153, 4157, 4205, Leedy Avenue, 1703, 1711, 1129, I'm sorry, 1711 North 42nd Street, 1129, 1135, 1201, 1205, and 1207, North 41st Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be, this bill will be referred to appropriate.
Resolution, non-privileged.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a privileged resolution recognizing Jane Golden, honoring her life's work, legacy, and contribution as a fundamental pillar in the arts and culture community in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer three resolutions, one of them privileged, two non-privileged.
Thank you very much, Member Jones. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 4947 through 49, 4951, 4953, 4955, 4957, 4967, 4969 through 73, 4979, 4981, 4983, 4985, 4987, 4989, 4989 and a half, 4991, 4991 and a half, West Gerard Avenue located in the 4th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the 3900 block of Concha Hocken Avenue Bishop Keith Reed Way to honor Bishop Keith W. Reed Sr. for his incredible work as a preacher, teacher, lecturer, and counselor.
Well done, Member Jones. This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings to examine the potential establishment of the Office of Freedmen Affairs within the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. I know public comment will be good today. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have three privileged resolutions.
Am I co-sponsored on that bill, on that resolution?
I have three privileged resolutions, thank you.
Chair recognizes Member Jones.
Of course you are, Mr. President. I wouldn't have done it without you.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. I have three privileged resolutions today.
Thank you very much, but Chief Clerk, please read the title of the privileged resolutions.
A privileged resolution recognizing the week of September 15th through September 21st, 2025, as Diaper Need Awareness Week in Philadelphia, and acknowledging the outstanding efforts of community-based organizations working to ensure that all children have the essential items needed to thrive and survive.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Education Law Center, PA, for its 50th anniversary, for its outstanding contributions and lasting impact to ensure access to quality public education for all children in Philadelphia and across Pennsylvania.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the week of September 15th through September 21st, 2025, as National Coding Week in the city of Philadelphia, highlighting the essential nature of coding skills in a rapidly evolving digital world.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Ketya Lozada.
Good morning, Council President. I'm sure our 18th council member is going to be very excited. I have no bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you very much, Member Lozada.
I hope he takes it easy on us during public comment.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one non-privileged and two privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 1811 North Bucknell Street, 1818 North 23rd Street, 1805, 1850 North Ringgold Street, 1939, 1937, 1939, 1945, 1935, 1947, 1907, 1913, 1931, 19, and 1931 North 19th Street, and 1909 North Van Pelt Street in the 5th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a privileged resolution recognizing September 21st, 2025, as Sunday in the city of Philadelphia, and recognizing the Philadelphia Solar Energy Association and Third Act PA for their advocacy for a solar-powered southeastern Pennsylvania.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing September 17th, 2025, as National Workforce Development Day in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention that the Workforce Development Resolution is also being co-sponsored by Councilmember Catherine Gilmore-Richardson as well.
Thank you very much, as you'll be duly noted. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have two resolutions, one privileged and one non-privileged today.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold a hearing on the federal attacks and local challenges facing reproductive health care in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution condemning the Trump administration's deployment of the National Guard to American cities and calling on leaders across the country to defend democratic governance and civil liberties through every lawful means.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harady.
I got 50, beats us up anyway. Oh, I mean, one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much, sir. Chair.
Went over everybody's head.
Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the third week of September 2025 as National Construction Appreciation Week in the city of Philadelphia, honoring the contribution of the construction industry to the vitality of our city.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. I have three bills to offer today and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills and resolution?
An ordinance amending Chapter 12-3400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Use of an Automated Speed Enforcement System to Improve Safety by Providing for the Use, Administration, and Enforcement of Automated Speed Cameras on Designated State Routes," under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing 3419 Kensington Partners or a subsequent owner to install, own, and maintain an encroachment at 3423 Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19134, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 3423 Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19134, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the reappointment of McCullough Williams III to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council. Chair recognizes Councilmember Brian O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9-4900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Prohibition on Use of Certain Bags by Retail Establishments to Modify Certain Definitions," require retail establishments to charge a fee for the provision of a bag to customers, and require signage, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Baz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Steve Jamison, owner of Blue Soul Shoes, an exceptional minority small business owner, for his creativity, resilience, and uniquely Philadelphian response to adversity.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one bill today.
Thank you very much, but the chief clerk please read the title of the bill.
An ordinance amending Section 9-3903 of the Philadelphia Code, Certificate of Rental Suitability, require tenant documents to include the provision of voter registration information to tenants, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to your appropriate committee. As there are no bills being reported from today, from committee for today, the next order of business is consideration of the calendar. The chair recognizes Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 250730, 250734, 250735, 250736, 250741, 250743, 250749, 250750, 250752, 250755, and 250756. 250373 is being amended. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. 250303, 250731, 250732, 250733, 250751.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we would consider public comment as follows. The public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in order in which your name appears on the signup sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public congresses each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I would now ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
We have Darren Forgeron, Deborah Gordon-Clare, Roseanne Kerlin, Amelia Doley, Michael Martin, and Kate Perez. Please make their way to the podium.
My name is Darren Forgeron, and I am a paralegal at Community Legal Services of Philadelphia. I am here to speak in response to Resolution 250743. I want to thank Councilmember Landau and City Council for highlighting the importance of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, also known as SNAP or food stamps. New SNAP work requirements apply if someone is age 18 to 64, they don't live in a SNAP household with children under 14, and they don't receive a disability benefit. If these adults cannot prove they are exempt or working an average of 20 hours per week, they may only get three months of SNAP every three years. These harsh rules threaten to take away food from tens of thousands of hard-working Philadelphians like our clients, but it's not too late to prevent hunger in our communities. The best way to protect SNAP is to help people get an exemption from the work requirements. An exemption will allow SNAP recipients to keep their SNAP safe until their next annual renewal, even if their circumstances change in the meantime. SNAP recipients who work are exempt from SNAP work requirements if they earn at least $217.50 a week before taxes. Recipients are also exempt if they have a medical condition that reduces their ability to work, are taking care of a sick family member, are pregnant, are unable to work because of domestic violence, or are experiencing homelessness. There are many more exemptions that will help Philadelphians struggling to afford food. Visit CLSFilla.org/SnapChanges for the full list of exemptions and instructions on how to help people claim them with the County Assistance or Welfare Office. Councilmembers, you also have a flyer on your desks with additional information. Cuts to SNAP are cuts to the health of Philadelphia. Our city must come together to keep our community fed. I thank City Council for all of your work to help families keep food on the table.
Thank you to Councilmember Landau, thanks, for introducing this resolution, and thank you to the Philadelphia City Council for recognizing the Education Law Center of Pennsylvania on our 50th anniversary. My name is Deborah Gordon-Clare, and I am ELC's Executive Director. When ELC opened its Philadelphia office in 1975, a small staff began developing an ambitious mission to ensure all children in Pennsylvania have access to quality public education. From landmark cases that secured rights for individual students here in Philadelphia to systemic victories that dismantled discriminatory policies and challenged our state's unconstitutional school funding system, ELC has been proud to stand with families and communities in the fight for education justice. Through individual representation, impact litigation, and policy advocacy, we work on behalf of students in poverty, students of color, students with disabilities, students in the foster care and juvenile justice systems, multilingual learners, LGBTQ youth, students experiencing homelessness, and students at the intersection of these identities. On behalf of the Education Law Center, I thank you for recognizing our legacy and for standing with us as we look to the next 50 years of advancing equity and opportunity for every child.
We have Roseanne Kerlin, Emily Doley, Michael Martin, Kate Perez, May Tamar Riley, Randolph Smith, William McCann, and Benjamin Hoover also make their way to the podium.
Okay. My name is Roseanne Kerlin. Good morning, Council President and City Council. I'm here talking on Resolution 250734 about the city, owned property is used for community benefit. I support that. I support that resolution, but the disability community is being left out since the Carousel House was closed in 2021. Wheelchair basketball and many other activities for the disabled have been displaced. We need to reopen and repair the Carousel House. Many promises have been made, but none have been kept. Please, City Council, help us repair and reopen Carousel House.
Esteemed members of City Council, my name is Michael Martin. Thank you for your service to this great city. I am speaking on Resolution 250735 about the land bank and city property. I am in favor of this resolution. I believe there is a clear plan for property transfer in this city for community benefit, and community benefit is why we are all gathered here today. I would ask that City Council, in the interest of community benefit, become actively involved with reopening Carousel House Recreation Center. Carousel House was a completely accessible center that was built and operated for 50-plus years for the disabled community of Philadelphia. Promises for rebuild have been unfulfilled. Our programs are dying a slow death as we share an already overcrowded Gustine Recreation Center with able-bodied residents of the East Falls neighborhood. The programs we are able to relocate to Gustine are operating at 50% capacity. We would ask you to please come to the aid of the disability community of the city. We need your help. Thank you very much.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, when people are right, they're right. I stand up for those who are right. I want to say that promises were made under a different administration that called for, and we approved in this body, $12 million to rebuild the Carousel House. The delays, the inflation has moved that project up to close to $40 million. So, I stand with them, and if I could have gotten over there to take a picture and hold up and speak over that side, I would. But let me assure you of one thing. When I make a promise, I keep it. We're going to rebuild Carousel House. In the interim, colleagues, we have moved people to Gustine Lake, which is also in the 4th District. But to their point, when you mix those populations of individuals who have special needs with people who are trying to hog a court, sometimes that can bump heads. So, a particular rec facility just for, just for this population is going to happen. I'm going to give you this one, too. There was a plan in another administration, and I'm not trying to pile on, but the good thing about seniority and longevity is you remember the promises that were made then, and in different administrations, you intend to make sure they hold to it. They said what the design was is to build some aspect of special needs in every one of the rec centers around the city. Well, that does not work. And so, we're committed, we're putting 10 toes down to rebuild Carousel House. My name is Curtis Jones, and you've got my word on it. Thank you.
SNAP is the largest anti-hunger program in the U.S., supporting about a third of Philly's residents, improving health outcomes, stimulating the economy, and helping us recover from natural disasters. Hunger is dangerous, leaving people desperate, unable to perform regular functions, and especially dangerous in the early stages of life, where nutritional stunting increases risks of infections, disease, limits the body's ability to develop their skeletons and intestines, impairs cognition, and increases overall mortality rates, creating lasting damage on the human body. We have a country where working families cannot adequately feed our own children, and instead of having a budget that ensures all Americans can eat, SNAP is reduced and defense is skyrocketing. Money we could be using to eat has been selling weapons to an occupation, maintaining a complete blockade since March, forcing parts of Palestine into stage five irreversible famine. Hunger stumps their growth, as well as their exposure to white phosphorus bombs, tear gas, shrapnel, direct bombings, burnings, maimings, and amputations without any medical, without any medication or anesthesia available. Babies are reported too hungry to cry. There's no hospitals left fully operating, and children we've seen begging for medical evacuations on Instagram for months have been killed. Administrative barriers impact the most vulnerable firsts, such as seniors or people with disabilities who are unable to go back and forth with the SNAP benefits office. This resolution also ended SNAP eligibility to thousands of immigrants with lawful status, such as refugees and asylum seekers. We have Palestinian medical evacuation asylum seekers here, and they're going to be left to starve again. I join you in condemning our administrations ill-advised, and I also want to join you, I would also like you to condemn their lifting of the sanctions against Israel and their attempts to crush our First Amendment rights by doing, I'm sorry, I'm overwhelmed, but we need to free Palestine and stop sending arms to the occupation. Thank you.
Good morning, Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Emily Doley, and I'm here on behalf of Neighborhood Gardens Trust to express deep gratitude for several, on behalf of several neighborhoods, for the passage of three resolutions today that will enable the permanent preservation of four beloved community gardens. They are Cleveland Street Garden in Point Breeze, Oakford Street Garden in Gray's Ferry, Viola Street Garden in East Parkside, and The Farm on Florence in King Sessing. Together, today's resolutions, which are bills numbers 250730, 250734, and 250735, authorize the transfer of 10 total parcels of land to Neighborhood Gardens Trust for permanent preservation. These lots are not just plots of land, they are vibrant, life-giving spaces where neighbors grow food, flowers, and community. They represent resilience, connection, and care. We applaud Council President Kenyatta Johnson and Councilmember Jamie Gautier, who introduced today's resolutions for their leadership and collaboration with the community. We also want to thank Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for her support today as well. This action reflects a powerful commitment to preserving Philadelphia's neighborhoods, and we thank you for recognizing the value of these spaces. We look forward in the future to working with all council members to preserve gardens in your districts. These are spaces that deserve our protection and investment. Thank you.
We have Tamar Riley, Randolph Smith, William McCann, Benjamin Hoover, excuse me, Eddie Wang, Maggie Foster, and Jane Golden also make their way to the podium?
Good morning. My name is Tamar Riley, and I would like to thank the council for allowing me to speak today. I'm here, I'm here alongside other supporters of the Carousel House Recreation Center. I'm here also to show my support and my approval for, to support Resolutions 250734, 250735, and 250736, as well as the support for the council's mission to return underutilized properties to productive use and to foster diverse communities. However, I must raise the issue of the Carousel House, located at 4300 Avenue of the Republic, which served as a vital recreation center for people with disabilities. The Carousel House has been closed since June of 2021 due to safety concerns. Since its closure, supporters, including participants as well as the surrounding committee, have only received broken promises regarding the rebuilding. We are here today to ask the members of City Council to help us by urging rebuild to begin fulfilling their commitments and to start work on restoring the Carousel House immediately. It's been too long. We also are deeply concerned about the ongoing lack of communication from both Rebuild and the Department of Recreation. Thank you for your time.
My name is Randy Smith, and I'm a gardener at Viola Street Garden, and I support Bill On May the, on May the 25th, 2022, Councilwoman Brooks, in partnership with Councilwoman Gautier, former Councilwoman Jim, the Neighborhood Gardens Trust, and other organizations chose the Viola Street Garden to launch the Restore Community Land Campaign. the Viola Street Garden to launch the Restore Community Land Campaign. Now, on September the 18th, I stand before City Council to thank all the people and organizations that made this dream come true for Philadelphia gardeners. Thank you.
And I want to start off by thanking all of the esteemed members of the council for the continued support. My name is Benjamin Hoover, Director of Community Engagement and Legislative Representative for the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers. And on behalf of President Steinberg and the 14, over 14,000 members of the PFT, I speak in support of Resolution 250303, sponsored by Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, which honors the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Service Center School. I also speak in support of the recognition of the Education Law Center and the great work that they have done in support of the children of Philadelphia. This council has repeatedly shown a willingness to support the educational programs and staff at all levels to enhance the development of our city's number-one asset, our children. On this National Constitution Week, and also on Saturday, September 20th, which is National Care for Kids Day, there is nothing greater than we can do than empower our children to read. So, I'd like to invite all members of council to this weekend's literacy fair, which is a collaboration between our National Union, American Federation of Teachers, the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson's office, and Councilmember Jeffrey Young, as well as State Senator Vincent Hughes. And before I leave, I do want to also give a special thank you to Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson's office for the instrumental work. We've been working on this for over six months. We were planning to have it in the spring, and then other things intervened and pushed it off to the fall. And just the amount of work that your office has put into it has been tremendous, and I want to thank you. I do have flyers for everyone here. We can applaud, we should applaud her office. I do have flyers here for everybody on council and then also members of the audience. Thank you for your time.
Chair now recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments, but I think, Member Thomas, this collaboration deserves the public to know, you guys are giving away 30,000 books. Catherine, I'm sorry. 30,000 books. And I think that's an amazing, amazing feat in light of the fact that up in Washington, they want us to burn books. So, thank you for that. I want to put that on the record. Thank you so much.
May we have Eddie Wang, Maggie Foster, Jane Golden, Steve Jamison, and Dee Dukes make their way to the podium.
Dear Council President and Councilmembers, my name's Eddie Wang, and I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors from the 2700 block of Gray's Ferry to express our gratitude for the Gray's Ferry Street Garden. When my husband and I first bought our place in Gray's Ferry in 2019, and there were vacant lots and vacant properties everywhere, many young people have loved the neighborhood, and only the older residents left. Even though the Oakford Street Garden was started decades ago by Lydia Wilkins, and she still lives on our block, and that she's the best block captain that we have, and she was getting old to maintain the garden by herself. Fast forward to now, we want to thank you for all the initiatives you have started in our neighborhood. Thank you for the affordable housings. Thank you for the turnkey programs. The families are returning. The young people are returning. I actually saw a bunch of kids playing the biggest elaborate tea party on my front stoop just the other days. We haven't seen kids on our street for years, so we want to thank you. And then, we also want to thank you for the playground that we have that was renovated in 2017, and we want to thank you for the park that we have, and we want to thank you for the gardens you continue to allow us to have. And so, right now, the garden is actually gonna be named to be a Miracle Garden, and that was proposed by Lydia, because over the years, we see how the neighborhood starts to change, and then there are all sorts of people living on our block now. And, you know, there are older residents, young residents, and all different age. So, we just want to thank you. We also hope that in the future, you will support us when we fight against CHOP's 1,000-car garage being built next to our Dee Finnegan Playground. Thank you again for your dedication and your passion to make our city better and better each day. Thank you.
Good morning, City Councilmembers. My name is Maggie Foster. My name is Maggie Foster. This is Millie. I am speaking on Resolution 250730. Thank you for approving the community garden on Oakford Street. I'm a newer resident, and already I see how much this means for the families here. A garden isn't just about vegetables, it's about community and about childhood. It's my daughter crouching down to watch bugs, chasing butterflies, and coming home with dirt on her hands. This garden gives her a space to thrive. As someone new to the neighborhood, I've already seen how much Gray's Ferry has been asked to carry: Pollution, traffic, and projects that don't put families first. But this garden is different. It's healing. It brings fresh food, cleaner air, and a stronger sense of community. I ask you to keep supporting projects like this that have tangible benefits for families and just importantly, just as importantly, to stand with us against projects that will bring us harm. A 1,000-car garage across from our playground would only bring danger, pollution, and stress to a neighborhood that already carries too much. Thank you for helping us plant something good in Gray's Ferry and for standing with both longtime neighbors and new families like mine as we work towards a healthier, safer future.
I'm Jane Golden. I'm the Executive Director of the Mural Arts Program. I love being here. I'm gonna cry. Oh, my goodness. Oh, you know how much I love being here, right? I can be here like all the time. It's one of my favorite things. Councilmember Thomas, thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. You're extraordinary for shining a light on our work, for believing in us, and for believing in me. I cannot thank you enough. And for everyone who's here, you know that I love you. You know I cherish, I value every single day that I get to do this job. I told the Philadelphia Inquirer, there is nothing that I don't love about it. And one of the loves is working with City Council. I value that. When I see you in the neighborhood, when I see you coming to a dedication, when you give me ideas, and I can go, yes, yes, let's get that done. Like that, Councilmember Jones, we just got that done, right? That big wall. And it's like just a pleasure. And I want to say, in 1998, when we became mural arts, we had, we were on an empty floor, we had a little rickety table, there were four of us, and we looked at each other, and we're like, we're a pro arts program. What are we gonna do? And we're like, we're gonna do murals everywhere. And that is what we did. And in some way, we've never stopped, providing art as a service to citizens across the city. For us, it's a matter of equity. Everyone, everywhere deserves beauty, and anything less than that is just not acceptable. And we want every child to have art education, and people who are in a state prison, to the county jail, to people coming home, to people in the behavioral health system, to art education. Thousands and thousands of constituents are served every year, and there is more work to do. But that work is made possible, I want to be honest, and I say this everywhere and everywhere I go. I'm invited to Yale University tomorrow, and I'm going to Chicago next week, I talk about all of you. And I talk about what an extraordinary public-private partnership this is that allows us to get the work done in the most profound, eloquent way possible. You all know that I always say that art ignites change. I say it because I've been a witness to that change, and you are standing by my side, and I will be forever, forever grateful to all of you, to the Council President, for helping to make the work possible. Thank you.
Excuse me, Jane. Jane, could you come back to the podium? Could we give Jane her flowers? Let's give her a real big round of applause. Good job, Member Thomas. Jane, we appreciate your hard work and your dedication, not only when it comes to beautifying our cities through murals, but also your work regarding social justice. And so, good job.
Thank you, Council President. But you all know I'm not really going away. So, I'll be here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have Steve Jamison, Dee Dukes, May Eric, Pam Ray, Michael Smith, and Danae Mobley also make their way to the podium?
My name is Steve Jamison, owner of Blue Soul Shoes, 1805 Chestnut Street. Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Council. And thank you, Council President Kenyatta Johnson, and also Curtis Jones, Councilperson, great supporter of my business. Cindy Bass, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, I don't have any prepared remarks. Young lady who came before me, I love her spirit. Fantastic. Again, I don't have prepared remarks, but about a month ago, well, Cindy Bass introduced a resolution recognizing my business. About a month ago, an individual threw a brick out of my window, my storefront window, breaking the window. And instead of responding in anger, what I did was I took a boot and cut the boot in half and placed one side, one half of the boot on the inside and the other half on the outside to create an art installation, so it appears as though the boot was going through the window, but it's not. So, it's now become a piece of art that people, when they walk by, they see, they smile, they touch the glass to see if the cracks in the glass are real, if it's just some sort of prop or whatever. But it is real, it's really broken. And Whitney, I thank you also. And so, with all that, I say that the resolution talks about the resilience of my business and myself, but that really doesn't speak about me, it's really more about the city and the city that gave birth to me. Nice town where I grew up in, East Oak Lane, where I now live, and the sports teams, and everyone here, City Council, how the public watches you all to fight, to resolve issues for the city, to make the city better for all of us. And so, you know, I just offer for you that if you find yourself on the receiving end of an offense as I did, rather than respond in anger, to respond in kindness and grace and to help those who are suffering from what I believe to be the person who offended me, suffering from mental illness. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve and I went to high school together. It doesn't look like it, because it looks like we just graduated, maybe five minutes ago. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, a number of our members shop at Blue Soul Shoes, including Councilmember Jones, who I believe is wearing and will model a pair of Blue Soul Shoes today. Thank you. I'll have more to say during public comment. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Good morning, Council President and members of City Council. My response is in opposition to Resolution Number 25071. My name is Dee Dukes, and I am the founding president of the Winfield Community Neighborhood Association, a registered community organization with boundaries in Winfield and the surrounding areas. I'm also overall a city leader. WCNA supported the variance in the matter of 5052 City Avenue for the following reasons: Appropriate use of commercial space. The proposed use of 5052 City Avenue as a beer distributor is consistent with the commercial character of the City Avenue Business District, which seeks to bring positive commercial investment into the community. Two, revitalization of a long vacant property. This commercial building was remained vacant for more than seven years. Testimony presented at the ZBO hearing from a realtor confirmed the difficulty in securing a tenant with only one prior proposed use during that time. That prior variance was rejected by the community, and the applicant ultimately withdrew. Three, significant investment and community commitment. Unlike a tenant, the current applicant is the proposed owner, who has committed to making a substantial investment to purchase the property and supports the community. Four, fair and transparent ZBA process. From March through July 2025, a fair and transparent ZBA process was carried out. Multiple community meetings were held, and opportunities were available for opposition to be presented, to which there was none. However, councilmembers and/or representatives and other RCOs relied solely on a written letter of opposition initially presented to the ZBA and did not participate in all ZBA proceedings. Finally, it is important to note that the ZBA maintains a procedure to hear appeals within an established deadline. Adherence to these timelines ensures fairness and consistency for all parties. For these reasons, WCNA respectfully supported the variance requested for 5052 City Avenue and opposes this resolution. Also, thank you for celebrating my pastor Bishop Keith Reed in that honor, and thank you for Councilmember Young for the workforce development resolution on my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Good morning. My name is Eric Pumroy, and I am here to speak on behalf of the resolution on declaring September 21st Sunday, introduced by Councilman Jones. And thank you very much. We very much appreciate your support. This weekend, there will be hundreds of celebrations of solar power across the nation, and one of the largest of those will be just across the street in Love Park. And why these, why are these celebrations going on? Well, it's because people are celebrating solar power because an amazing thing has happened over just the last few years. Solar power's always been the cleanest form of energy, of course, but solar power suddenly has also become the cheapest, and the cheapest by far. And we can see this happening, this dramatic thing happening all over the world with the explosion of solar installations, even in a place like Texas. And because of the promise of solar, we can see a future for our children and our grandchildren, where the air they breathe is clean, the energy that they need is cheap and sustainable, and the frightening prospects of climate change are fading. We know that there are significant challenges to making the future a reality, and financial barriers especially, but also regulatory ones, and perhaps most importantly, opposition from the fossil fuel industry. So, this Sunday, we will be celebrating the remarkable technological advances that is solar power, and we hope you all will be coming over to Love Park to see us. But in the weeks and months to come, we'll be looking forward to working with City Council and other city agencies to see how we can make the lives of all Philadelphians better by a rapid transition to clean energy. by a rapid transition to clean energy. Thank you.
May we have Michael Smith, Danae Mobley, Obona Hagens, Lysinda Trotter, and Mo Rushdie also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, Council President, members of City Council. I am Danae Mobley. I am the CEO of Coded By. It's an honor to join you today in support of the resolution brought by Councilmember Landau, declaring this week National Coding Week here in the city of Philadelphia. Recognizing National Coding Week is more than symbolic, it's a commitment to preparing Philadelphians for the future. Coding, digital literacy, and now artificial intelligence are no longer nice-to-have skills, they are essential building blocks for economic mobility, civic participation, and equity in a rapidly changing workforce. At Coded By, our mission is to ensure that young people, particularly those that are underrepresented in tech, are not just consumers of technology, but creators and leaders in this space. We work with over 650 young people across the city and every corner of the city, and we know that these are the essential skills that we need them to have in order to win in our next generation. Every day, we're working with Philadelphians to cultivate problem-solving, creativity, and confidence through these skills, and we see firsthand how excess of these skills can change the trajectory of a young person's life, opening doors to careers that will define the future of work. This theme of the year for National Coding Week is embracing AI and the future of work, which resonates deeply with our efforts. We believe that AI should be a tool that enhances opportunity, not one that creates barriers. And by equipping our young people with the knowledge and the skills to harness AI responsibly and creatively, we are investing not just in their futures, but in the future of the city as a whole. So thank you so much. On a personal note, I see a lot of you show up for our events, you're continuously showing up for our young people, and is deeply appreciated by leaders like me. And we know that this sends a message to the city that you value inclusivity, innovation, and opportunity. And on behalf of Coded By and the young people that we serve, thank you for your leadership in championing a vision for Philadelphia where technology is not a privilege, but a pathway to equity and success for everyone. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Obona Hagens, President of the Philadelphia Reparations Coalition for American Freedmen and a fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. You know, right after slavery ended, the very first thing our people created was an office. It was called the Freedmen's Bureau. And that office wasn't just name on, a name on paper, it was survival. It built schools and hospitals. It defended the freedmen and courts. It supported freedmen towns, and yes, it gave us the Freedman Bank. In fact, the Freedmen's Bureau is what created everything: freedmen courts, freedmen hospitals, freedmen schools, freedmen towns. That's the combination to the lock for the constitutional repair of the American freedmen. Without it, there wouldn't have been a bank, there wouldn't have been structures to start fixing centuries of stolen labor. But that work didn't last. The Freedman's Bank was looted, it was sabotaged, freedmen towns were undermined, and the Bureau itself was dismantled. Here in Philadelphia, here in Philadelphia, the bank operated right in the 7th Ward, in the 2nd District, the 2nd Councilmatic District is where it was. With this historic step, Councilmember Jones has set himself apart from every legislator in the last 150 years. This is the very first time since then that the discussion of an Office of Freedman Affairs has even been in any legislator in the country. Curtis Jones, you had the fortitude, you had the political will to stand up for your people, the American freedmen, the ones who built this country and saved this country in the Civil War. And for that, Councilmember Jones, you deserve a standing ovation, brother, because you did something that we need to heal the American freedman community. Obona Hagens, over and out.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma. Would you like to be recognized?
No, sorry.
Councilmember Bass, would you like to be recognized? Thank you.
Lysinda Trotter, also known as Philly Wonder Woman. Hi, everybody.
Hey, Philly Wonder Woman.
I'm speaking on 25052. Kwadere Johnson, better known as the Voice of the Youth, also known as LGP Qua, was a community advocate, game changer, motivational speaker, and a leader for the youth of Philadelphia. He was a dedicated brother, father, and son. I'm gonna put this down. This young man was really amazing. Whenever I called him to do anything for me to speak to the youth, he would come and do it, and a lot of young people looked up to him. He also had celebrities all over the world, even posting when he passed away. So with that being said, I would like to get the block named after him. Do I name the blocks too, or no? Because I don't know. Am I supposed to say the blocks on here? Anybody? Okay, I'm gonna say it then. So also naming 9th Street between Clearfield Street and Indiana Avenue, and also the 900 Block of West Clearfield, which is where he was born and raised, and we want to name him Voice of the Youth, because he's the voice of the youth. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. My name is Mohammed Rushdie, and I'm testifying today as a citizen and not on behalf of any organization. I wanted to support, testify in support of Resolution 250730 for the disposition of land in the 2nd District. But I wanted to take the chance today to thank you, Council President, for the latitude last session, and to thank Councilmember Curtis Jones for what I call the enough-is-enough speech about the atrocities that are happening in Palestine. And I say Palestine, I do not say Gaza. It is Palestine. Council President and Councilmembers, when you put your foot on someone's neck for eight decades, events like October 7th happen. Two years, 63,000 people dead, half of which are women and children. The West Bank has no Hamas, but settler terrorists are robbing land every frickin' day. The world is rising, and the world is speaking up, and we need to speak up as well. I get asked, do you believe Israel should exist? Is Hamas a terrorist organization? I will not answer these questions anymore before I get answers to my questions, which are: Do Palestinians have the right to exist? Are the settlers in the West Bank terrorists? Is the IDF committing ethnic cleansing in Palestine? This is no longer about Hamas or the hostages. This is about a maniac called Benjamin Netanyahu that has allowed himself to be above international law and above any human law. This is the time to say stop. There is no other way than a peaceful and a fair two-state solution. Thank you for your patience, Council President.
Good morning, Council President and esteemed City Council. My name is Michael Smith. I'm the Executive Director of Cradles to Crowns Philadelphia, and thank you for the opportunity, although I'm sad that I have to come back again to talk about National Diaper Needs Awareness Week. And thank you, Councilman Landau, for inviting me today. I'm here to add my voice with other diaper banks in the city to bring attention to the dire need for diapers in Philadelphia's babies. Half of Philadelphia families with infants and toddlers don't have a reliable supply of diapers. That's one out of every two families. Babies need to be changed up to 12 times a day, and diapers cost between $50 and $120 a month. The math can be devastating to a single parent living paycheck to paycheck. Imagine if you could not change your baby or your grandchild in your care. Imagine the health risks, the stress on both baby and caregiver. And also, did you know that caregivers can miss up to five days of work a month because of diaper need? Imagine losing your job because you just could not put your baby in diapers. The good news is that we're making strides in this area. Cradles to Crowns is one of the largest suppliers of diapers in the city, helping 130 agencies to do their work by supplying 3.1 million diapers annually. So diaper need is critical in Philadelphia. But unfortunately, 3.1 million diapers just isn't enough. Not enough to get parents to work, not enough to send babies to childcare, and not enough to promote the health and well-being of Philadelphia's youngest. We need more diapers and wipes, and we're seeking the support of City Council. Thank you, Councilman Landau, for doing a collection for diapers today. But if you would like to work with us, together we can get more diapers into the hands of children in our city. Thank you so much for your support.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
Thank you very much. We will now consider bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendars. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250730?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1316 and 1318 South Cleveland Street, 2714 and 2716 Oakford Street, 1225 South 17th Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250730.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250730 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I'm requesting a leave to tend to other council business and ask that I be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions for the remainder of today's session.
Leave shall be granted.
Thank you, Council President.
You will be voting aye on all bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I would like to offer an amendment to...
Oh, not yet.
We're not there. Aye.
You had your button on, I thought you wanted to make an announcement or a comment.
I'm going to get to you. I apologize.
It's okay.
Aye on all bills, aye, on all bills, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kathy Lizada, make a comment, your light is on. Good, okay. Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250734?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 4200, 4202, 4204 Viola Street, and 4205 Leedy Avenue, located in the 3rd Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gortier for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250734.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250734 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250735?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 5417 and 5425 Florence Avenue, located in the 3rd Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gortier for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250735.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250735 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250736?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1610 South 56th Street, located in the 3rd Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gortier for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250736 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250741?
A resolution authorizing Councilmember Jones's appeal on behalf of and as representative of City Council of the decision of the zoning board of adjustment with respect to 5052 through 56 City Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250741.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could speak to this resolution briefly.
She recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you. Winfield, if you know Winfield, and my ward leader is here, Catherine Gilmore Richardson. If you go back to its history, particularly during the whole process of establishing as a, like a small village from Dr. Winfield, literally, one of the overriding traditions of that area, which is not a legal reason to appeal, was no alcohol. Like there were no neighborhood bars and taverns, and that was someplace that was free of that. And up until maybe 2010, when Landmark came, that was like an overriding position. And there was also one bar up there, and my son actually frequented it. But there were very few. And in Winfield, where this building is, was a mattress factory, and that was fine. This use is a beer distributorship, and it's right across from the wine and spirits, and it's right down the street from the marijuana dispensary, and it's right across the street from St. Joe's University. Can we sell some books? Can we sell some vegetables? Do we have to always have liquor as a driving force for development in communities? So with that, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250741 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250743?
A resolution condemning Congressional Republicans and the Trump administration for their dramatic, ill-advised, and harmful cuts to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250743.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250743 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250749?
A resolution repealing Resolution Number 250587, adopted May 29th, 2025, which also named Jefferson Street between Broad Street and 13th Street as Donald Duckey Burt's Way.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250749.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is to make a technical amendment to a resolution, so I move for the adoption of this repeal.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250749 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250750?
A resolution also naming Jefferson Street between Broad Street and 13th Street as Donald Duckey Burt's Way.
She recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250750.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we offer this new resolution for adoption, which includes Mr. Burt's wife in it. Thank you.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250750 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250752?
A resolution also naming North 9th Street between Clearfield Street and Indiana Avenue as LGP Qua Way, and also naming the 900 Block of West Clearfield Street as Voice of the Youth.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250752.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of all young people in the city of Philadelphia, as we continue to celebrate Qua's legacy in the city, I had the opportunity to talk to his mom, and she supports this resolution, so I ask members of City Council to move for its adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That Resolution Number 250752 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250755?
A resolution also naming the 3300 Block of Tilton Street as Chev Way to honor the life and legacy of John Chev.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250755.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250755 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250756?
A resolution also naming the 800 Block of Ron Street, Hugh Joseph McIntyre Way, in recognition of his sacrifice during the 1975 Gulf Oil Refinery Fire.
Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250756.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Resolution Number 250756 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution, Bill Number 250373?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9-3500 of Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Criminal Record Screening Standards to amend definitions, add clarifications, and enhance remedies, all under certain terms and conditions. and enhance remedies, all under certain terms and conditions.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion...
Thank you, Council President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 250373. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved in property second that the amendment to Bill Number 250373 be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Would the Clerk please read any additional resolution on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing Jane Golden, honoring her life's work, legacy, and contribution as a fundamental pillar in the arts and culture community in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Gortier on behalf of Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gortier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Thomas, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings to examine the potential establishment of the Office of Freedmen Affairs within the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move enthusiastically for the adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the week of September 15 through September 21, 2025, as Diaper Need Awareness Week in Philadelphia, and acknowledging the outstanding efforts of community-based organizations working to ensure that all children have the essential items needed to thrive and survive, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I offer, um, uh, as, sorry. I move for the adoption of the, uh, of the, uh, resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. Sorry. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Education Law Center PA on its 50th anniversary for its outstanding contributions and lasting impact to ensure access to quality public education for all children in Philadelphia and across Pennsylvania, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the week of September 15 through September 21, 2025, as National Coding Week in the city of Philadelphia, highlighting the essential nature of coding skills in a rapidly evolving digital world, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau, Chair of the Technology Committee.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Good job, Member Landau. Chief Clerk, please read the title of the next resolution.
A privileged resolution recognizing September 21, 2025, as Sun Day in the city of Philadelphia, and recognizing the Philadelphia Solar Energy Association and Third Act PA for their advocacy for a solar-powered southeastern Pennsylvania, introduced by Councilmember Young.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing September 17, 2025, as National Workforce Development Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Young.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Along with Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold a hearing on the federal attacks and local challenges facing reproductive health care in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the 3rd week of September, 2025, as National Construction Appreciation Week in the city of Philadelphia, honoring the contribution of the construction industry to the vitality of our city, introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Harity for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Steve Jamison, owner of Blue Soul Shoes, an exceptional minority small business owner, for his creativity, resilience, and uniquely Philadelphian response to adversity, introduced by Councilmember Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
This concludes our calendar for today. Are there any, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I introduce a resolution to be voted on at our next council session condemning the deployment of the National Guard to several cities very similar to our own. This is not the time to stay silent and wait to see what happens. We must be loud and clear about what's happening in our country right now. These are military occupations of American cities meant to intimidate and silence the people who live in those cities. With this resolution, I am inviting my colleagues, the mayor, and everyone in Philadelphia, to join me in speaking out against these invasions and defending our freedom to govern ourselves. I will have more to say about that next week. I want to acknowledge District Attorney Larry Krasner for his leadership on this issue. I would encourage people to attend his town hall tonight at Mother Bethel AME Church. Doors open at 5:30, and the event starts at 6:00 PM. This morning, I also, I'm also introducing a resolution authorizing a hearing on the state of reproductive health care here in Philadelphia. Given recent federal and local cuts, this hearing came from the work of our Reproductive Health Task Force. During our last meeting, members shared challenges they were facing, including misinformation, new federal policies, and lack of funding. After the Supreme Court overturned Roe versus Wade in 2022, our city government took action to support patients and providers here in Philadelphia. Each year since then, the city has provided grants up to $500,000 for local nonprofit organizations that support low-income Philadelphians assessing and assessing contraception, STI testing and treatment, cancer screenings, abortion, and other life-saving medical care. This funding was a lifeline for thousands of patients and providers during a surge in the number of people seeking care as local clinics closed and patients traveled into Pennsylvania from states where abortion was banned. As we approached the 2026 budget last spring, these organizations were counting on municipal funding in order to keep their doors open. Many of us here in city councils supported city funding for these organizations because we understood that Trump planned to defund reproductive health care on the federal level. But in the 2026 budget, these local organizations were also defunded on a city level in closed-door negotiation. No reason was given. We had money for corporate tax cut, a wellness ecosystem that we have no data on, over $800 million in new housing or new borrowing, uh, but apparently no money for reproductive health care. In other cities, elective leaders are meeting the moment by increasing access to reproductive care. Chicago awarded $2 million to their local abortion fund. Atlanta, Baltimore, Columbus, St. Louis, and others have created funds to help with travel and costs associated with seeking reproductive health care. I want to know why Philadelphia is failing behind our peer cities in protecting women. Philadelphians overwhelmingly support reproductive freedom, and our city can and should be a leader in upholding reproductive rights. Trump made good on his promise to cut funding, and I have to ask, why is Philadelphia following his lead? We knew this was coming. We knew who would be hurt overwhelmingly, black and brown women living in low-income neighborhoods. Through this hearing, we will investigate the real human cost of federal and local cuts to reproductive health care and identify ways that our city can take a stronger, more proactive step against the escalating attacks on reproductive rights. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes speech on behalf of Majority Councilman Jamie Gortier.
Thank you, Council President. During the DC 33 Municipal Worker Strike, we got a stinky, dirty reminder that breathing in trash harms both our mental and physical health. Imagine breathing all that in and more every single day of your life. That's the unjust reality endured by our neighbors in the city of Chester. America's largest incinerator burns 3,500 tons of trash and industrial waste daily, making it the number-one industrial air polluter in our region. And what are they burning? Our trash. Thirty-seven percent of all trash generated in Philly gets burned, representing almost almost a third of everything spewed into the air by this incinerator. Chester and Delco neighbors experience the worst of this environmental disaster, but our neighborhoods suffer as well. If smoke from the Canadian wildfires can travel thousands of miles, imagine how often we breathe toxic trash air from the Chester incinerator. Breathing in trash every day makes us sick. One in five of our kids have asthma. Just this week, Philly was named a 2025 Asthma Capital, and studies confirm that trash air fuels our city's above-average cancer rate. We need to stop making ourselves, our kids, and our planet sick. That's why today I introduce the Stop Trashing Our Air Act, which prohibits the city of Philadelphia from contracting with companies that profit by turning our trash into pollution and sickness. The city's priority is making Philly safer, cleaner, and greener, but we cannot do that at the expense of our neighbors in the county, who are left sicker, dirtier, and less safe because of the trash we send into their air. As City Council's Environmental Chair, I've been working closely with the Parker Administration on charting another path forward. I look forward to continuing to collaborate with the mayor on this, and I thank her for her leadership. But with the city's waste disposal contracts expiring at the end of the fiscal year, now is the time to do what's right for our constituents, neighbors, and planet, and stop trashing our air. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gortier. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Once again, we are mourning the loss of life, uh, senseless, due to a senseless act of violence. That happened yesterday in New York County in Pennsylvania. I want to honor the courage of the police who were making a routine, um, stop at an individual's home, and, um, three police officers were killed and two were injured. You know, I want to honor the courage of these police officers who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. These tragic events continue to happen, and we must do more to stop the violence across the country. Their service and dedication will not be forgotten. I wanted to also talk about, um, a bill that I introduced today. The right to vote was hard-won. Generations of Americans, John Lewis, Dolores Herta, Fannie Lou Hamer, Medgar Everts, Mabel Ping Hua Lee, Octavius Caro, Mary Church Terrell, and so many others fought too hard, and some died to secure this right to vote. We cannot take their sacrifice for granted, and we must be honest, our right to vote is not secure. There are active efforts, including the current Trump Administration, to make voting harder and to strip away access from gerrymandered districts to the intimidation of poll workers and the erosion of voting protections. Leaders like Stacey Abrams remind us daily that the fight for access is ongoing struggle. On Tuesday, September 16, we marked National Voter Registration Day, a timely reminder that access must be simple, easy, and institutionalized, not left to chance or a single news cycle. That's exactly why I introduced this bill, because that is what the bill does. We know that people fall off their roles when they move. Renters like young people, working families, new Philadelphians move more often, and updating a registration card can slip through the cracks. My legislation uses the start of a lease to provide clear, timely nudge to voters to make sure they're registered. It requires that the standard rental package tenants already receive also include straightforward voter registration information and a direct link to register or update an address online. No new bureaucracy, no extra hoops, just what people need exactly when they need it. This is how we safeguard participation, not only with speeches in election years, but with systems that make access routine. The message must come from many directions, including our schools, libraries, community organizations, and faith institutions, social feeds, and storefronts. Today's bill adds one more durable touch point baked into the everyday process of renting a home, so that our neighbors keep their say in what happens at City Hall, the State Capitol, and Capitol Hill. John Lewis taught us that democracy is an ongoing act. My bill removes one more barrier and makes the path to the ballot a little clearer. In Philadelphia, we just don't protect the right to vote, we make it easy to use. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ma. The Chair recognizes my Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you so much, Council President. I wanted to, to pause and thank Ben Hoover from the PFT. I'm not sure if Ben is still with us, for his acknowledgement during his public testimony regarding our upcoming Reading Opens the World Family Literacy Book Fair. I wanted to also thank the American Federation of Teachers and Randy Weingarten. This was her idea. They have given away more than 1 million books across the United States of America. And when we met at an event last November, she promised to come back to Philadelphia and partner with my office to bring 30,000 books to the city of Philadelphia. So, Mr. President, with the AFT, with the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, Art Steinberg and his team, our other amazing partners, and my colleague, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young, who's the District Councilmember for the area, as well as State Senator Vincent Hughes, we're all coming together for the Reading Opens the World Literacy Fair. It'll be this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It'll be at the Salvation Army Haven of Hope, located at 1340 Brown Street off of Broad and Fairmount. There's plenty of parking at this location. It's easily accessible via Septa, and we will have, again, 30,000 free books for our young people and others across the city of Philadelphia. We are also giving away laptops, brand-new laptops courtesy of AT&amp;T, and also Lego box brick sets. Now, we know young people love Legos. They've had a resurgence lately, and my kids love Legos, so we'll be giving away Legos. In addition to that, every educator, every teacher will be able to receive 50 books for their classroom libraries to build their will be able to receive 50 books for their classroom libraries to build their classroom libraries. We will also have face painting, balloon animals, moon bounce. We'll have robot building for all of our STEM young people. We'll be building robots with Brooklyn Foundry Robot here in Philadelphia. We'll also have additional special guest authors, some that we all have seen recently in Philadelphia, maybe some folks who are connected to some of the Philadelphia Eagles and other authors. We will also have the city of Philadelphia's Hiring Bus and other community resources. So, there'll definitely be something for every single person who comes out. I'll tell you that we have more than 1,800 people signed up for the book fair thus far. Eighteen hundred people. So, we know that reading and literacy is important to our residents and constituents here in the great city of Philadelphia. We are so honored to be doing this work together with the AFT, the PFT, Councilmember Young, and State Senator Vincent Hughes, and we ask each and every one of you to join us this Saturday for Reading Opens the World. Thank you.
Great job. Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson. Chair Recognizer Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I just want to mention how preventable tragedies happen in our city every day. One happened yesterday at 15th and Lehigh, where there was a shooting of a Dobbins High School student about seven blocks away from the school. And when we talk about, you know, safe routes and safe corridors here in the city of Philadelphia, and we talk about, we typically, you know, on the city's website, when you search for, you know, safe routes or safe corridors, what pops up is Vision Zero, right? And it talks about infrastructure. And the website says that, you know, it's helping communities create safe, healthy environments for students to walk, bike, and roll to school. Again, under Vision Zero. But this, what I haven't seen is where is this comprehensive type of plan for gun violence? In particular, you know, it says that young people deserve to be able, I'm paraphrasing now, that young people deserve to be able to go to school without fear of traffic. And I would say they also deserve to go to school without fear of being shot. And I know TownWatch has a safe corridor program, but if you look at TownWatch's website, it is nowhere near as comprehensive as the Safe Route Program under Vision Zero. Nowhere near, right? And TownWatch lists that it protects students traveling to and from school. But again, where is that an investment? And I want to point out to my colleague, Councilmember Jones, in his blueprint for Safer Philadelphia, on the very first page, page number one, it addresses this very issue of getting kids to and from school safely. That's the number-one issue in this blueprint for Safer Philadelphia. So, when are we going to make the proper investments in expanding the Safe School Corridors Program? I know that the school district added Dobbins to this particular program, but we need more, right? We see that in certain communities, just adding, you know, adding around the edges just isn't enough. We need real investments for real solutions, and these are solutions that Councilmember Jones or others have been, came up with. So, when are we really going to put the dollars into these programs that we know will work? Stop, you know, taking around the edges. Like, let's make a real investment into our communities that are getting hit every single day with gun violence. Every day. No days off from this, right? And so, we want to keep it at the forefront as we are going through and making policy decisions, making budgetary decisions, and allocating resources to programs that actually prove to work. And I believe that if we can expand some of these programs, including the school district's Safe Corridor Program, that something like this would have been preventable. We talk about putting the infrastructure in place to prevent traffic deaths. Let's put the infrastructure in place in our communities to prevent gun violence. Let's put those people there. And on this same, on this same block, which is very ironic, you know, I just want to let folks know that the world's most common legally consumed drug is caffeine. So, that would make the world's most largest legal drug dealer with a market cap of $95 billion to be Starbucks. And on this very block, 15th and Lehigh, Starbucks pulled out of a deal to build a community store. And this community store would have been an asset for that neighborhood, would have provided jobs for that neighborhood, would have provided eyes on the street for that neighborhood. So, maybe this student would not have been shot because of the activity that that Starbucks would have brought, right? Starbucks was supposed to open up these stores, these community stores, in Black and Brown communities due to lawsuits and due to other pressure, public pressure, that they received. But recently, again, they pulled out of this one at Lehigh. They pulled out of a store in West Parkside. But they're opening stores in Fishtown and Skookoo Yards, right? Look at the, what are those neighborhoods, right? They're certainly not North Philly and West Philly. Well, Skookoo Yard is West Philly, but different, different part of West Philly, I would say, right? So, how does that, what does that look like to us? It looks like that there is a lack of interest by Starbucks to open up in Black and Brown communities. They have, they're worth 90, their market cap brings $95 billion. And they can't open up in a Black and Brown community area. We drink coffee, too, right? I know folks who drink Starbucks every day. This was to have a drive-thru. So, I mean, traffic is going to be booming every day in this area. So, you can't tell me that this particular area, there's no market for it, right? You can't tell me that costs are too high to develop this, because you're going to recoup your costs. So, I just want to put, you know, the city on notice that, this is a corporation that has been showing, seems a lack of interest in communities that we represent. And so, you know, I just want to put that on record that although the federal government and some other places may be going away from diversity, equity, and inclusion, the city of Philadelphia still stands on that, right? And we will continue to stand on that. But, you know, we have to hold businesses like Starbucks and others accountable to our residents, to our citizens, because if you want to claim to be a great corporate partner of ours, then really invest in the communities that could, that need the help, that actually need this type of investment to improve. You're going in places where you open up anything, someone's going to make money. But Starbucks has the capital to really place those types of investments in a community to see real change. And so, those are the types of businesses that we're going to continue to try to welcome here in the city of Philadelphia, that are willing to invest to make a real change in our city. And with that, Mr. President, I just want to let those who are listening know that as we speak right now, my office, along with North 10, at the Linfest Center Hunting Park, is participating in a college and community fair that's hosted by graduate Philly, state rep Danilo Burgos, Temple University, the mayor's Office of Latino Engagement, Office of Reentry Partnership, and philiccolleges.com. That is at the Linfest Center right now until 2:00 p.m., 3890 North 10th Street. And also tomorrow, my office is participating in a community cleanup in 19th and York. And so, if you live in that area, we will be cleaning up that entire community in partnership with the Philadelphia Park Authority, the Office of Cleaning Green, the Streets Department, and others. We're going to bring those city services right to your front door. You can meet me at 19th and York at 8:00 o'clock. Let's roll up our sleeves and clean up our community. On Friday, we are partnering with Project Home to have a health fair at 22nd and Cecil B. Moore. So, all of our seniors, all of our community members, please come out to get some services, to get some resources. And we need to realize that there is a health center, a health clinic, right in the heart of your community, right there at 22nd and Cecil B. Moore. Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson mentioned our book fair. Again, please, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. Please come out to this fair. Every time I place books on any table we have in an event, they're the first things to go. So, that shows me that our communities are looking for knowledge. They're looking to learn, and we have to keep cultivating that. And also, on Saturday, we will be renaming the 1,300 block of Jefferson Street after legend Ducky Burt's, and that begins at 11:00 a.m., I believe. And so, please come out to celebrate this legend in our city. And with that, Mr. President, thank you for, I close my remarks.
You're welcome. Good job, Member Young. Chair Recognizer Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. First, congratulations to the Education Law Center of Pennsylvania on its 50th anniversary, and thank you to my colleagues for signing on to my resolution recognizing the profound impact its work has had on ensuring access to quality public education in Philadelphia and across Pennsylvania. Among other things, as you know, the Education Law Center was an integral part of the lawsuit that finally found that the inequitable funding formula of our schools is unconstitutional. Their efforts have shaped statewide education and improved the lives of thousands of underserved students in the region. They've been a trusted resource for families, for child-serving professionals, for advocates, and for lawmakers. Thank you, ELC, for your activism and passion for improving the education of our young people. This week, I also introduced a resolution marking September 15th through the 21st, 2025, as National Coding Week in the city of Philadelphia. In the rapidly developing tech landscape, encouraging Philadelphians, especially our young folks, to learn their vital skill set, ushers them into the 21st century. This year's theme, Embracing AI and the Future of Work, focuses on how AI can enhance tech skills rather than eliminate them. National Coding Week is designed to make coding accessible to everyone who wants to develop skills in computational thinking. And I'd like to thank Coded By for incorporating this vision into their own mission and for speaking to the important effort and the essential nature of coding skills in this incredibly digital world, increasingly digital world. Finally, I also co-introduced a resolution with Councilmember Gilmore Richardson and Councilmember Thomas, recognizing this week as Diaper Need Awareness Week in Philadelphia. Through many incredible community organizations' work to address diaper insecurity, it's an uphill battle. Nationally, 1 in 3 families experiences diaper insecurity, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost between $80 to $100 per child. This has grown over the years into a public health issue across the U.S., and low-income Black and Brown families are often the hardest hit by this disparity. Philadelphia is proud to be home to many organizations working to address diaper insecurity, such as Cradles to Crayons, and my office is excited to partner with them on a diaper donation drive. We'll be posting about this on social, but colleagues and anyone watching right now, if you'd like to contribute, please bring a box to my office, bring diapers to my office in this box in 592 in City Hall, and we'll also have a QR code for you to donate financially if you want. And finally, at last, next week is Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. I'd like to thank Council President for this gift, for my New Year's gift, and I want to wish all who are celebrating a Shana Tova, Happy New Year. But I've got to say, once again, while we are celebrating the New Year, I do want to recognize the atrocities being inflicted on Palestinians daily by Israel. Let this time be a reminder to all of us that we must speak out, to lend our voices, to demand that we stop supporting this genocide.
Thank you. Chair Recognizer Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Really quickly, just tonight, we are having a night market on Ogon's with the Reverend Dr. Allen Waller, the legendary Blue Notes, Melissa Morgan, Fool's Paradise, and DJ Diamond Cutts. So, there'll be food trucks, live music, vendors. I'm happy to be, the individual will really help us work in West Oakland and bring back this tradition that we've had in our area, hopefully as a precursor to what we all have been wanting back in our area. And I want to thank all of us in City Council for being supportive, especially Council President, in all these endeavors that we're trying to do in the ninth district. So, September 18th, 509, 7100 block of Ogon's Avenue. And next week, I'll see you all at Philly After School Hype. If you are a parent or a family, and you need to get your kid in an after-school program, as the Chair of Children and Youth, myself, and Councilman Isaiah Thomas, Chair of Education, we're putting together the largest school after-school hype, the largest after-school program in the city, with the School of Chicago Philadelphia and Philadelphia Youth Basketball at the Six-Man Center at 4250 Whistaken Avenue from 1183 on Saturday, September 27th. Don't miss it. If you're interested in getting, an organization has until this week to sign up. If you're a youth serving organization, sign up. You get kids from the city involved. If you're a parent and family, just tell people about it, because the idea is, there are youth programs out here, and there are caring and loving adults. And the kids that are involved with programs have better outcomes. So, hope to see y'all soon.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Good job. And my deputy whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I just wanted to just mention, again, my good friend Steve Jamison, who I went to high school with many, many moons ago, and Blue Soul Shools, and just talk about the resolution that we passed today for him. He is a true Philadelphia original and a shining example of what it means to be a responsible and resilient small-business owner. For nearly two decades, Steve has brought style, service, and heart to Center City. But what truly sets him apart is how he responds when challenges arise. I knew him back in high school, and he has always been this type of person. When someone shattered his storefront window a few weeks ago, Steve didn't just board it up until he could repair it. He transformed it. He turned that broken glass into a piece of public art that drew smiles, sparked conversation, and reminded us all that creativity and resilience can walk hand in hand. This is the kind of leadership our small-business community needs and deserves, rooted in the neighborhoods, driven by purpose, empowered by a deep love for the city. So, today, let's celebrate Steve Jamison and reaffirm our commitment to supporting small, local, and responsible businesses that reflect the very best of Philadelphia. I also want to put on the record a celebration that will be happening this weekend to honor the extraordinary service of Reverend Dr. Michelle A. Simmons, who will become a bishop this weekend. A visionary leader, fierce advocate, and tireless servant of all the people, Reverend Dr. Simmons turned her personal journey into a powerful mission, founding Why Not Prosper, which many of you know, and transforming the lives of thousands of women returning home from incarceration. For over two decades, she has shown us what it means to lead with faith, compassion, and unshakable purpose, from the streets of Philadelphia to underserved communities around the world. Her work speaks volumes, reminding us, her work speaks volumes, housing the unhoused, uplifting the broken-hearted, fighting for justice, and reminding us all of the power of second chances. So, congratulations to Reverend Dr. Simmons, and thank you for showing it's possible when faith meets action. And one last thing I just wanted to add in, in reference to my colleague, Councilman Jay Young's comments regarding the Starbucks. And I know we had had some brief conversation about this. And I would say, number one, I want to remind everybody, there's a fantastic coffee house, Freedom Coffee House, which is minority-owned and a stable in the community at 4906 Old Jork Road. So, I want to encourage folks to spend their dollars for people who want to invest in their communities. So, you know, you know, I drink a different, I drink tea, but I drink it from a different provider, other than the one you mentioned. But, you know, when people don't want to spend money in our community, we have to learn that if you don't respect our communities, we will not be shopping with you. We will not spend our dollars. Because, listen, we can put that green in somebody else's hands, and that's exactly what we should be doing. And looking for a vendor to take that space, preferably one that's African-American, Latino, you know, just someone from the community. that's African-American, Latino, you know, just someone from the community who is focused on that community and knows the value of the dollars in that community. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Very well said. Just as Target. Chair Recognizer, Councilmember Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 25th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. Second.
It has been moving properly. Second, that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 25th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor, seeing the five, are saying aye. Those approve, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you all very much.